Call any order, roll call vote please.
Alderman Persick.
Here.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Here.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Here.
Alderman Evans.
Here.
Alderman Kerwin.
Here.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Here.
Alderman Tudor.
Here.
Alderman Stuter.
You have a form.
We had a regular meeting in Wilmington City Council on July 15, 2014 is now in session. Council got approval of minutes from July 8 for you.
Here I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from July 8 that have been placed on file.
Motion filed by Alderman Tudor, we have second. No second. Second by Alderman Persick, any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Persick.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Stuter.
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Mayor's important few things, first thing I want to do is, I know not many guys are here, but commend the emergency crews for the recent drowning we had, which was Friday or Saturday, if you remember right now. Right. The professionalism and the way they handled the entire situation, unfortunately I happened to be dragged through town as this was occurring, followed the S2 crews in there, but to see now the fire department, and then they activated the MABUS system. We had MABUS, plane field, Elwood, everybody down there, probably within the hour. They did have a Lightstar helicopter that was patrolling the river during the rescue operation, so to see that professionalism, say they can see how they kind of work hand in hand was, to say the least, exceptional. Very professional in how they handled the impact, so I recommend them on that situation. Unfortunately it happened in the middle of the day. What I got a mayor's report, actually I got three people to announce tonight, and the first one that announces Martha Schubert, Martha is coming for 75th rep, 675th.
State rep?
There we go, I can't even say it right.
It's a lot for more.
Yes, I had the opportunity to be here at Grand County Bank after hours at Chamber Conference. It was just fun.
Thank you, just all very quick because I actually am a previous city council member for the city of Morris for about six years. So, sitting and listening to your conversations brings back a lot of good memories and that budget night and approving all of that expenditures is very overwhelming, it's, you know, sometimes mind boggling, and I commend Kim for doing an outstanding job of explaining it in layman's terms. My background is, I'm a nurse, 25 years, I'm at Morris Hospital, still there, emergency response handling my background, trauma nurse specialist, and nursing supervisor and cardiovascular specialist too. I also was a deputy coroner for about five, six years, and specialized in child death prevention, so EMS background, emergency response is very near and dear to my heart. My job is, has been, always will be to take care of people, and that's why I've transitioned it to this opportunity of becoming a state representative. I'm a mother, I have three children, three daughters, single mom, and a granddaughter with cerebral palsy, so my priorities are children, special needs, and yes, absolutely conservative fiscal responsibility. I find me as a very middle of the road, common sense kind of woman who knows how to certainly work her own budget and family budget, and I find that, you know, we gotta be absolutely responsible for every cent we spend, and you certainly see that being demonstrated tonight, so I commend all of you. It's not about what we want to do anymore, it's about what we really need to do, and how important it is to be so secure and safe and watch every dollar we spend, and we need to extend that attitude to everyone, so. Thank you for letting me come and introduce myself. I did hand you out the cards, I would love for you to just, if you have time, jot down some things that you think are really important, shoot me an email or a phone call, and let me know what you find is very important to your area, your city of Wilmington, and I'd like to hear about it. It's very hard to know everything, I do a lot of walking and a lot of talking, I still work full time, so I do this, of course, after work, so you'll see me more in the late in the day than versus during the day, but again, I'm very passionate about helping people, leadership skills, and I am four generations living in Grand County. So, I'm here to stay, and certainly my family too, I brought two of my daughters with tonight, and again, thank you for letting me have just five minutes, and please shoot me an email or a phone call, I'd love to hear from you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, next up, I'd like to introduce the Honorable Senators. Would you like to?
Sure, thank you Mayor Orr. Good evening, I try to get around the 38th District and head every village hall meeting once or twice a year, and always enjoy coming here as well. We just got out of session in the May, so clearly this year it's the budget, the budget, the budget, and you'll hear a lot about that, but, you know, at the end of the year, still, even after passing a very large income tax increase three years ago, which brought in $26 billion in revenue to the state of Illinois, we're still in the same situation where we've been at. Our credit rating has been downgraded in the last 10 years over 13 times, 20 times in the history of the state, 13 times in the last 10 years. Even after the very large income tax increase, we still have a very large backlog of bills, about $7 billion worth of bills that are outstanding, so your nursing home, your hospitals, many of the service providers that do work for the state are waiting to be paid. We also have, I sit on the education committee as well, and in this past year, actually about a year and a half ago, we did a report that kind of delved into the budget, what was happening with education funding, because I hear from all of those superintendents in the district, and many of the superintendents have noticed that, you know, every year the state gives them less and less money, while even after the income tax increase and $26 billion of new revenue coming in, education continues to be prorated by the state to the tune of 89%. So, in other words, you talk to your superintendent, his budget's based on what he thinks he'll get from the state, but then low and behold, the governor will send up 89% of what he is supposed to get or what he's budgeted for. So, that really puts many of our schools into a situation where we have, where they have to either go into their savings, which many schools don't have, cut staff, or raise property taxes, three things that we don't want to do. So, you know, even with the new revenue coming in, none of that new revenue unfortunately went to education, and that's something that we've highlighted, I worked on the education funding task force, which is to look at how education is funded, and what we found in the past two years kind of supported what we have thought all along. Very quietly, the formulas and the budget were changed, and they're kind of, they were hidden in the budget, deep in the budget, took us about six months to research it all. What we found is, by changing the formulas just a little bit, that pot of education dollars, which we all know goes into one pot, the formulas allowed about $750 million of additional money to quietly be brought up to Chicago, or CPS as we call it, and that's money that was taken directly away from downtown state and suburban schools, and that's why our schools have been prorated, and that's why you have seen our property taxes go through the roof, and that's the number one issue that I hear from property owners, or from people I talk to, is the high cost of property taxes. So, we're going to continue to work on education funding, we have said all along, instead of looking at changing the funding formula, just fully fund education, and we'll see a lot of the pressures off of your schools and many of the schools in my district be taken off. Regionally, what I've been doing in the past year is three things that I'm very proud of, one is I started an internship program, I tour many of the manufacturers through our whole district, and we have the nuclear power plants, we have the Comacall, we have a lot of manufacturing, and they would always say, well, you know what, our, you know, our workforce is going to retire, but we haven't found those junkies who want to come up. So, I went to the schools, and the school said, we'll show you the best and brightest. So, we started an internship program that allows seniors in high schools to apply for these internships that the companies have provided. This year I'm proud to say that we have 17 internships, 175 high school seniors applied for these 17 internships, and they're good paying internships for seniors, accounting, IT, marketing, engineering, everything that you're going to use to work in the district. We started just in Grand County because we wanted to get it up and going, but our goal is to expand it through the entire county, and I hope it's a good model, I know it's a good model for the rest of the state as well, so I'm very excited about that. We're also working with the local community college, and we're in the current, you know, the middle of planning to develop a, what originally was going to be kind of a nuclear technical training program, because currently, many of our kids are going to a particular training school in another state, and I said, we need to have that training here, we have the community colleges here, we want to keep our kids here, and we are making the program such that the industry, and we expanded it from nuclear to the chemical and the refinery industry as well, and it's going to be more of an industrial maintenance slash operation control program. So, we're making it so a lot of that industry will identify and respect, you know, this program, and hopefully recruit right out of the community college, and keep our kids working right here where their families live and grow, so I'm very proud of that. Third, and, you know, we talked about the major flood about a year ago, probably $150 million of damage throughout the 38th District. So, after we cleaned up and figured out, you know, where do we need to go from here, I started a program that's a regional flood plain management program, and we're taking a regional approach to addressing flood management. So, we've had two meetings, we have our third one, it's every three months, coming up here, and everybody's welcome to come, from all of the communities, and we have the best and the brightest in flood management. I've learned more about flood management in the last six months than I've ever learned, but we have the best and brightest experts coming in, giving out the information to all of the elected officials throughout the district, and we're there to help them get their flood manager up and going and educate and get them to, you know, right training, help communities look at the ordinances and adopt ordinances and flood management that will lower their flood insurance as well, but ultimately, we'd like to put together a regional plan for the district that looks at all of the flood mitigation that needs to happen on a regional approach, because, you know, I'd like to go, when we go for grants at the state or federal level, I can't help but feel that we would have a leg up because we've taken a regional approach as opposed to everybody, your neighbors competing for the same grant where right next to you. So, that's kind of our purpose of having this, and we hope that, you know, ultimately it's a model that they will take throughout the state. I know that there's another Senate district south of us that's also looking at this flood management kind of regional approach we are too. So, very exciting things that we're going on in district, and, you know, I'd just like to stop by and see if there's any issues, I know we talked about after your storm, the trees, so, and thank you, and I told the mayor, it's very nice, I am on your email chain, so any updates that you get in regards to unfortunately the sad situation of the drowning or the storm going through, I'm on that chain and I appreciate it, because it just immediately I can kind of see what's going on, and I have an immediate knowledge, so I do appreciate all of the communication that goes back and forth with that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Cheers.
Last but certainly not least, you got your chairman Reagan right there, you're going to bring the exciting news for tomorrow.
Well, just follow up with your little updates on county business, what's been going on, not too much, and sometimes no news is good news, but I know, I'm sure all of you are aware, last year when we're working through our budget, we're also dealing with a strike in the county, so since that is all settled, we've actually kind of rubbed up a little bit early starting the budget process, because things, looking at the budget last year, I don't feel like, you know, things were looked at in detail as much, because we're also worried up about our employees and how that fit in, so we didn't have to raise taxes, but this year we actually have a new financial slash budget director, she just came in about a couple weeks ago, she's amazing, so she's already coming up with some new guidelines and some new issues to look at for all the departments. Something that I'm working on with some of the other board members is, you know, kind of, you know, putting our thumb over our elected officials in each department, you know, whether it's the sheriff, that is always, always over budget, you know, the treasurer, the recorder's office and so forth, that there's a recording system there, because every year, you know, and again, this is my second year on the board, in the past it's, well, that's what we got last year, so that's what we should get this year. So, you know, if money isn't spent at the tail end, you know, well, there's money left, let's hurry up and spend it, you know, I just don't agree with that. So, definitely looking at some new tactics with the budget. I serve on the land use committee, which, as we all know, there's probably more projects going in District 6, especially in Wilmington, Elwood area than anywhere, but unfortunately, I don't have a say when it comes to the alien and when it comes to the airport, those are state issues, but what I am able to do is bring you guys information, bring our residents information, and it's the least I can do. The county was able to appoint an ombudsman, an attorney, Mike Hanson, who was, who also works with IDOT, and he's there to provide information and, you know, answer any questions that our residents have. I don't feel that IDOT has advertised him or his predecessor so much as they should, and so I felt it was important along with county board member Judy O'Gala out of Peatown, it's like, our residents don't know who this person is or that this resource is available to them, so I thought it was important to bring him here. Again, we've had, you know, public forums in Peatown at the 150 building, and a lot of people walk away with, well, I didn't get anything out of that. I can't guarantee what answers are going to be given tomorrow, but what I can do is at least provide the person and the resource that's there. There's also going to be two representatives from IDOT coming too, so again, it's the least I can do is provide these people and these resources. At the county level, we don't have a say of whether or not this project is going to go forward. And then on top of that, Representative John Anthony will be here, and I know Senator Resin was hoping to, she's working out some scheduling things, so we all want to be here for our residents when it comes to that project. Going up, going back to the land use, some, an issue that was near and dear to me was, there's issues about aerial photography being used, there's, we have local county ordinances in our townships, and the land use department issues any violations when it comes to that, and we felt that, actually, county board member Ballich and I kind of headed up not using aerial photography, our land use department, as the beginning source to look into any violations with our residents, we felt that was a little too big brother. The ordinance violation in adjudication system, I believe is there for compliance issue, you know, we just want people to get in complaint, it's not about the new German system, and it's not something where we want to take money from our residents when, you know, there's ways to get it fixed, and if we're going in and just looking for violations, it should be a complaint driven. So, we're able to pass a resolution that no ordinance violation coming out of adjudication can, that our land use department can use aerial photography to initiate that, so I thought that that was pretty important. I'm also on the judicial committee, and if you had seen, we, legislation was passed that there's going to be a courthouse user fee, I'm working for a new courthouse, but again, if you don't want to raise taxes, again, that's near and dear to my heart because I work there every day. It's not something that every resident uses, but it's, we need a new judicial complex that there's safety issues there, there's crowding issues, there's parking, and quite honestly, accessibility and, accessibility and user friendly, it's not, and so that's important to anyone that, whether or not it's, you know, they're a defendant in an issue, or maybe it's somebody getting married, they're a good thing, or, you know, using it for giving documents or so forth. So, what this legislation does is that it'll be, anyone that uses the courthouse, there will be a fee attached. Now, a lot of people look at that, well, that's almost like a tax. Well, we don't look at it like that, because again, if you use the courthouse, then it will be assessed, and there's also a way, if somebody doesn't have the ability to pay that fee, you can always go to Chief Judge James Zuck and ask him to waive that, so we look at that, so if somebody doesn't, you know, it's not a burden on them, but we're hoping that that could possibly generate anywhere from $1 to $2 million a year, it wouldn't start till January. So, again, I'm looking for any way to make things happen without raising taxes, so, but you guys know where each man goes. See you tomorrow.
All right, next up is citizens comments, do you have any citizens comments?
Hello.
Hello, everybody.
How are you?
My name is Mike Michaelowski, I'm from, uh, the vacating Jefferson Street, and it was about two years ago, and I'd like to resume that, if I may, the party, we questioned at that time, I'm only looking for 20 feet of Jefferson Street, half of it, and the village would maintain the other half with the other party, and doesn't seem to be interested in coming down to the city hall to discuss this situation. So, I'd like to move forward and see if I could vacate half of that street so I can, I have several people interested in purchasing my place, and it boils down to the same thing of parking, they need parking for a business, I have two people that have businesses, they need parking for their businesses, and they need parking for the residents, so I'd like to have a solution to this problem. Like I say, everybody mentioned, I've been paying taxes for two years, I've been working on this project every day, I'm a retired man, and it's pretty hard on me, I'd like to find a buyer, and it is hard to find a buyer with the situation that I've been in, so I'm just looking for a little help. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other citizens comments? All right, we have a move on to committees, planning a zoning commission, our next scheduled scheduled meeting is scheduled for Thursday, August 7, 2014, it's 6:00 PM, Tony, we have agenda, I guess, you know?
We might have a sided move out report for the concrete plant.
Before we go any farther, while we're on that too, just want to make note that next Wednesday, July 23, 10 o'clock in the morning, will be the ceremonial groundbreaking ceremony for the Michelin distribution facility in 146 planes, so it'll be the groundbreaking ceremony at that time, 10 o'clock, so anybody that could attend, please attend. Forgot about that. All right, committee reports, building grounds, parks, health, and safety, Alderman Persick, Alderman Van Dyne.
Mr. Mayor, the next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, August 13, 2014, at 6:00 PM.
Water, search, streets, alleys.
Mr. Mayor, next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, August 13, 2014, at 5:30 PM.
Police and S2, Alderman Stuter, Alderman Tudor.
Next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, August 12, at 5:30 PM.
Finance, administration, land acquisition, Alderman Tudor, Alderman Tudor.
I have the first two, I move to approve the accounts payable report dated July 15, 2014, in the amount of $247,972.33, and the June 30, 2014 collector's report in the amount of $685,043.46.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, we have second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Persick, any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Persick.
Yes.
Alderman Stuter.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
I have the next one, I move to approve ordinance number 14-07-15-01, and ordinance incorporating for all corporate purposes for the city of Wilmington, Wilmington, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning May 1, 2014, and ending April 30, 2015.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, we have second. Second, second by Alderman Persick, any discussion? Just one thing I want to say before we vote, the staff, especially Cam and Tony, I don't know how many hours, I know they spent a lot of time after 5:00, working on this, by doing work, and to get those numbers to respectable numbers that we could, and I know myself included, as well as the Alderman, but they put a heavy task on staff to get this to work, and I thought of what we got at that, a lot of number crunching, a lot of it looked in different ways, so sometimes to be creative with your funding and expenditures is a challenge. We're not alone in any other community, every community faces the same challenge, trying to get, working on getting those revenue streams up to meet our expenditures and make some progress. We're basically down to, every other municipality is as far apart as budget as a beaten potato, there's no fluff in anything, is what is absolutely needed, to continue to provide for our taxpayers, basically, to provide them every day, so I'm very proud of what you guys did today, because I know it's still a work in document, so we continue to work on it as we go forward. Any further discussion? The mayor will need to vote on this.
Okay.
Roll call vote please.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Persick.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
No.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
No.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Stuter.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
We have six yes, two no, motion passes.
Seven yes?
Seven yes, yeah.
There we go.
Hey, what can I tell you?
City courts will have to be good at math.
There you go. I typed well.
All right, thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, item number three's been removed from the agenda of the committee, so let's move to number four, I move to approve ordinance number 14-07-15-02, intergovernmental agreement with Wilmington Community Unit School District 209.
Motion by Alderman Stuter, we have second.
Yeah, I got it, second.
Second by Alderman Kirby Hall. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Alderman Stuter.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Persick.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
No.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Now we have seven yes and one no, motion passes.
Okay, next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, August 19, 2014.
Ordnance and license committee, Alderman Kirby Hall, and in that line you can put Alderman Evans there too, and we will assume that we just, Alderman, Alderman.
Next scheduled meeting, Mr. Mayor, is Tuesday, August 12, 2014, at 6:00 PM.
Personnel, collective, marketing, Alderman Hall, Alderman Persick, yes, we do have a detective session. For both sides?
Yes.
We have nothing at this time. City administrators report, Mr. Grant.
Yeah, the police facility is always an ongoing discussion, but we're getting down to an outline of a punch list, we'll maybe have another meeting on Monday to cover the punch list items, regards before we take possession of the building, or our contract to go in. I would forecast the way things are going with this, trying to coordinate with the installers and everything, we're looking at somewhere around probably October 1st, the very latest when we're going to move in, and maybe everything goes well, it will be sooner, but we got about six weeks of interior work that has to be done and get coordinated, and it's got to be done in phases, you know, painter has to get in first, then the ceiling guy second, and then the carpet, and tile people in, and then the furnishings, cut in and then, of course, we have to move everything from the old to the new, along with the IT coordination and connection to computers, or the state, and LifeScan, all that stuff, so, knowing everything, how it works, we might as well just issue for October 1st, eight.
Best to take our time with it.
Yeah, well, and in our contract, one of the things we did with this, not to exceed contract, since we didn't have, we did penalties and performance base, and change orders, you know, we have to take care of everything that's not, not, not in our satisfaction under the contract, you know, we're, we're going through, we're the punch list items, making sure that things are getting done right, and asking for redo minutes, nothing major, just minor things, but we're not going to take the key, because once we take that key, and, you know, warranties and all that starts happening, and, you know, so, we're not going to allow that, you know, that whole thing, but we'll give you the key, and then we'll work on the punch list.
I'll be very, very prepared, a lot of the stuff I've walked over with Tony, you know, this, this building's going to, hey, 20, 30 years, at least, you know, it'll be there for this purpose, so I could best we get that right, so.
Are all the bids that were won on that still valid, and everybody, nothing has changed as far as the bids and who's doing what?
Nothing has changed, the only thing we had to add on was the furnishings, storage, which I saw that bill when it came through, and then we through, and then we cut that off when we got the Sallyport finally done, and told them to move everything into the Sallyport. So we're safe on everything. And the installer for furnishings, he actually got pulled off, you know, he's got eight jobs for schools that he has to do, so getting him back to the job site wouldn't happen anyway till the end of August, because, you know, because we had it scheduled, you know, right in May, and that would have been perfect, because most of the, most installs are, he works for a lot of schools and institutions. But, yeah, and, and our, Sid and Kyle, you know, he's, he's all set, Van Dyne, and, you know, the Browns, they're, they're okay. They just, Browns probably just said, give us a two-day notice, and we'll, we'll get our, get our installers set up for that.
And electricians are running the wiring and everything as for the life scan and all that?
Yeah, that's our people doing that, you know, it's our IT people doing, that's all part of it, and the life scan company itself. We, we're live in there already with, with IT from Comcast, but then we have to get hooked up for the state with the life scans, and there'll be another hookup, they'll have to come in, you know, Nycor.
The IT people are?
That'll be through the life scan company.
Oh, okay.
Their, their own IT, that's part of that contract.
Okay.
And I say, we're okay with Nycor, you know, ComEd, everything's good there. We're, as you can tell, ICER was out there, you know, Kobe's got the site work that's going to be going on now, a way to get into the building. So hopefully, you know, the site will start looking more manicured, it'll be on in about two, three weeks, and we get deconstruction in, we don't have a date, I never come in to do the party mod and the drive and all that, but hopefully the next 30 days, they approved that contract, and they'll be in here the next 30 days or so. We're, we're in good shape. Budget-wise, we're still under the two belt, so we'll let you know when we go over, if you do. But, I don't, hopefully not, we'll let you know when it's done. But the goal was to get it, get it operating, get it up and running under two belt, so we, we think we'll be able to do that. There might be some landscaping that'll, but I, I'm working on a creative way to do that right now. The other thing is, and updates, as we were on the Transcold doing the, you know, opening out there, one of the things that we did learn from businesses that are coming in and looking at Wilmington, one thing they keep talking about is the business atmosphere that we, we provide and the environment. The reason I'm talking about that is, you know, LNI Transport, when they came in, their theme was the same way, and we're carrying that through. One of the things that, you know, our attorney sometimes doesn't get a lot of credit for, but we follow up with our word. When LNI Transport was having a challenge with the county regards to the taxes and the tax payment paperwork and documentation, you know, John stepped up and said, hey, tell us that, I'll be the finance people, and I'll help with the paperwork. And Attorney Urban was, was excellent, he knows that county, you know, court real very well, and those assessors, knows everybody else. So he was able to help them out, provide them, you know, direction, and was actually able to assist them in getting assessment begun for, you know, they did all the work, John, the sort of guiding them there. But the owners really appreciated, because they said, you don't see that Cook County, you don't see that anyplace else, and we don't see a bill. You know, you, you guys provide us, you know, advice to help us out, and you're committed, you're committed after we're here. And that's, I think that's another good, good thing to market, our community, and when businesses are here, with Transcolds the same way, they're able to phone up and call Kobe anytime, and Kobe responds, Gary or Jack, and we're getting great response back from our businesses, our commitment, and once they open, just don't disappear. We're, we're knocking on their doors, we're helping them out, so. And as always, any of the businesses, even LNI Transport put up, into the, new aldermen, if we're elected, and I can, everyone want to go out there, see the businesses, they could always just step on, unannounced, they, they don't mind, you know, show the place and tell them what the business is all about, so. They, they saw that Steve wasn't the alderman, and if you ever want to go out there, if Kobe and I had called, we could definitely do that, or if any of the aldermen want to go out to a business, we can reach out to the site, learn about it. Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Tom. All right, attorneys report their, their.
Thank you. Well, in the last week, there's nothing really I can report on at this time.
Good answer. Good, perfect. True.
True professional.
Thanks, Mike. That's a report. Executive session. Mr. Mayor, I made a motion to go into executive session for personnel land acquisition at 7:36. Motion by Alderman Larry Hall, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Stuter, roll call vote.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Stuter.
Yes.
Alderman Persick.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Stuter.
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.